Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I'm Brad Jordan, you want to come on in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you once again, and we just want to thank you for the many blessings in our lives. We thank you for the beauty of the sunshine today. That's something I think most of us are, it's something we welcome in our lives. And Father, I'm reminded of your word that tells us that it's by your favor that we stand strong. And if you hide your face from us, we're in trouble. And so, God, we just ask once again, Lord, for you to shine your face upon us, Lord, that you would give us favor. God, I pray for our mayor, the council, the city leadership, Lord, that your hand of praise and mercy, wisdom and strength will rest upon them in a mighty way, God, not just for this day, but for every day, as they lead our community. And Father, for all this, we give you the glory and the honor of Jesus and whose praise. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, we will now call this meeting to order. Susan, please make note, we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is a reading approval of the minutes for the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Second?
Second.
Any questions or corrections? Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So move. Thank you, council. All right, next up is a resolution. There's a few of them. The first one's for a grant award of two hundred seventy thousand. Oh, I didn't see that. I forgot about the workshop. I missed the meeting, but I was at the workshop. I should have got that one right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March fourth, twenty twenty-five workshop?
So moved.
Second? Any questions or corrections on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay, so moved. Thank you, council. Thank you, Natalie.
No, thanks, Susan. She was going like that.
Anyway. Next item is the resolution grant award of two hundred seventy thousand dollars for six patrol vehicles for the Beckley Police Department from the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Burn Discretionary Community Project Grant. Mr. Fowles, is there anything you want to comment on that?
I don't think it's anything necessary. Angela King, our grant administrator is here tonight. If anybody has any questions, she would certainly be willing to answer those. And the cost of each vehicle that we're purchasing would be forty-five thousand dollars. So it would just require a motion to accept the resolution.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Anyone having questions for Angela at this point? All those in favor of approving the resolution as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? So moved. Thank you, council. All right, next up is the resolution grant award of twenty-one thousand seven seventy-nine, the Gray Key cellular extraction device from the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, Edward Byrne Memorial Assistant Grant. Mr. Fow, you going to just roll with it, or?
It would be the same as the last one.
Very good.
And basically what we're doing, we're accepting the terms and conditions of these grants.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion for, any questions for Angela at this point? Okay, great. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed, say nay? Thank you, council. So next is resolution grant award of thirty-six thousand for thirty bulletproof vests from the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Burn Discretionary Community Project Grant. At this point, may I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Any questions for Angela on this one? Okay. All those in favor of approving the resolution as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay. Thank you, council. And the last one is the resolution grant award of fifty-seven thousand for ten portable radios from Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services Cops Technology and Equipment Program. May I have a motion to approve this resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Any questions on this one? Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? So moved. Thank you, council. Okay, next up is the renewal of contract with Soaring Hope Animal Rescue Partners. And at this point, I think I'll ask Jessica if you would want to comment on this?
Sure. This is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Beckley Raleigh County Commission and Soaring Hope Animal Rescue Partners. This is the renewal of the contract we had from March of two thousand twenty-three. They have removed significant amount of animals a year. They're working with animal control. They seem to be a very good partner in trying to take care of stray animals that are throughout the city. So we're renewing this at two thousand dollars per month. And they've also requested a kennel building, for three or four-run kennel building. And we'll be reimbursing at half for ten thousand five, at least, or at the most, ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, may I have a motion to renew the contract as presented?
Can I say something first?
Well, we'll get to the discussion part. We'll get to that. I know you're excited. So may I have a motion to renew the contract as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, now, is there any discussion or any questions for Jessica? Nancy, you want to start?
Yes, what I'd like to ask Jessica, does this money come out of the money that we give to the shelter?
No, this is in addition to.
Okay, because I think we need to, I have asked for numbers. I called Teresa Staten, who is the Vice President of the Humane Society, and I asked her for some numbers because in talking with the animal control people, it seems as though Soaring is taking in as many animals as the shelter. And I went out to the shelter and wanted to go back and see the dogs to see if they were full and got in some good trouble. So I did not get back there. But it should not be allowed that people cannot go back there and see the animals. That was never a problem when I was at the shelter and I was there for a long time in president. And you always had the back open because if people want to look at a pet to adopt, they do need to see all the animals. And instead, those people just show them pictures and then they bring up one that they pick out. And that's just not a way to adopt an animal and it's not giving the animals a fair shake. So I think we need to wait until I get these numbers because I do think we need to make some changes. I also work with a cat rescue and we have gotten a lot of cats out of here. We've done at least thirty up to New Hampshire in two weekends, which thirty at one time, so we ended up with sending over sixty. We, everybody seems to be getting out more animals than the shelter. And there is a major problem. I mean, we got a lot of animals out of that shelter when I was there. Yes, we did have euthanization at the time, but I mean, that's just the way we operated. And I don't have a problem with the no-kill, but I just don't see where these people are very aggressive either with moving the animals. And the fact they won't let you out of the lobby to go anywhere tells me that there is more to the eye. I mean, it does kind of make you wonder why. So...
Are we under contract with the Humane Society, Mr. Fow? Or is that just like something that just reoccurs every year, just kind of basis? Like, are we under like the same thing that we're trying to?
It's an annual contribution.
We reapprove it?
Yeah, it's an annual contribution.
Do you know how much it is off the top of my head?
There was no contract. I mean, when I was there, we had no contract.
It's currently sixty-nine thousand a year is what we're paying them.
Sixty-nine.
And there were, and there were six people sitting up front. I mean, the lobby was spick and span. I can't fault them for that. That was wonderful. I love that. But it should be more open to the public so you can go back there and see the, see all the animals in order to pick one out. And I just wonder why it is not. It is set up for the public to go back and look. So I feel like we really need to revisit it and I'm going to get numbers from Soaring and numbers from my cat lady and hopefully numbers from the shelter if they're interested. I mean, I've asked them, you know, if they're not interested, I think we need to revisit it.
I do have a comment about the animal shelter, the Humane Society years ago. So I went into the, when it was open, so I went in because I wanted a puppy. I know, I wanted a puppy. So I go in and I look in the front yard, and you know who's in the front yard, Nancy? Coach Barksdale is walking a dog, exercising the dogs. I thought, I didn't know you could do that. So I thought, well, I need exercise and the dogs need to exercise. So they was allowed to get a dog and walk, and, and, you know, we're the city of champions and there's Coach Barksdale walking a dog. I thought that was really cool, but it should be open as well. I agree.
I mean, you know, to me, the building, it is a five oh one C three. That means it should be open to the public. And I am a good paying member for like thirty years and I was not treated that way.
Nancy, when are you going to get those numbers?
They're working on them right now. So I will have them by Thursday by our workshop.
Mayor, thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to thank Tanya Williams. She is the Director of the Soaring Hope Animal Rescue for taking in the husky. That husky was causing a lot of problems for the past week or so. So she did get him from animal control and she named her Anna. And she said that that means wise woman. And she said that she would not be euthanized and she has a grooming appointment set up for this Thursday to address her nails and her matting. And they're also asking for donations. I donated today to the cause, so if you can, please donate to them. And I want to also thank Councilwoman Dingus. We had a meeting with the Animal Control Officer Daniel and Sheriff Pretty and Sheriff Deputy Shelton and Administrator William Pennell. And it was a very informative meeting and they are just willing to help us. And I contacted Officer Daniel this weekend. I text him and he texted me right back. I mean, that was this weekend, so I just wanted to tell them thank you. And I thank you, Councilwoman Dingus, for being there with me. She has, she's very compassionate about animals and so I just wanted to thank you also for being there. Thank you.
So how pressing is this? When is the current contract?
So the current contract expires the end of March.
At the end of March?
Yeah.
So we could, we could move it to the next council meeting? And, and you know, I would really like to sit down with the Humane Society because I know we had problems, you know, over this whole issue about two years ago. I can remember Mayor Rappold, Billy Trump and Dave Tolliver at the time were working and it kind of, I don't, I guess that's when this came up. I don't remember, like, we, they, they did the talks and I don't remember it ever coming back to council. So I would really like to sit because, I mean, I've been a supporter. I've done two fundraisers for the Humane Society back in like two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. And, you know, it, it seems like a lot has changed since then. And we really, I think we need to figure out where our partnership needs to lay because it's my understanding that they might not be super willing to help the city, even though we contributed a lot of money to them. So I would like to, you know, either set up a workshop and we can sit down with, you know, the director or the board or however it needs to be and then yeah, to discuss with them, do that. And then, you know, maybe even have Soaring Hope come in because it might be something that we can, you know.
I know, Tanya. She just couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah.
But Tanya is also very active in the spay and neuter coupons for low income. And that's important too, because then we don't have more and more strays.
Yeah, because I mean, I just feel like if we're given sixty-some thousand dollars a year, then if we have a problem, they should, you know, take care of us. If not, then we can do business elsewhere is how I look at it.
Well, my cat, the cat rescue that I work with, we spay and neuter every cat before they go out. I mean, that's just one of our main things we do. And I think the shelter should be doing the same thing with the dogs and the cats there. If they got that much money, they should be doing that.
And I would like for council to set up for a tour to go there.
Okay.
Would you like to visit the animal shelter? Is it, you want me to set that up?
Yeah, please.
Be glad to.
Thank you.
Do I make a mo, I'd like to make a motion to table this item until we can revisit that.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor of tabling the contract renewal to the next city council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay, great. It'll be tabled to the next meeting, next scheduled city council meeting. Next up is brief comments. Again, this is not a discussion, just, you know, we'll start with Councilwoman Bullock. If there's anything, some brief comments that you want, or maybe something you want on the next city council agenda?
Let's see. I was wanting to talk about the playground equipment on Barber Avenue. Any updates on that? And the status of the traffic light at Beckley Elementary and the soccer field?
I don't know anything about. Stoplight at Beckley Elementary.
Are you talking about a stoplight out on the bypass?
Yes.
Um. It's probably going to be impossible to get a stoplight there, but we are working with the Department of Highways to try to get like the flashing signs so when schools coming in, schools letting out, maybe drop it down to fifteen miles an hour. But I don't think we'll get a stoplight there.
All right. And Cody, I hate to put you on the spot, about the bumps. Were you able to look at the speed bumps?
Yeah, I mean, they seem like they held up pretty well.
Delayed?
Yeah, the, the humps, yeah, they're just more like a sway. It's not like actual speed bump, but yeah, they seem.
I was thinking about something like that for Miss Mary over there on the view. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just, we got housing on the agenda coming up next, abandoned, abandoned, abandoned housing going on. And I still, I talked to Shirley Trotter a little bit about a list, inventory of the cars and our insurance and all that, see how many cars, vehicles we have and how, what we're paying the insurance. And Mr. Gerald, I'm glad you see you have a, we have a budget meeting coming up, workshop coming up. Thank you. I'm really looking forward to that and you getting all those numbers together. We have a fine print of what's going on in our department.
Myself and Mr. Chandler have been working on that for the past seven days.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Yes, and department heads also. We had department meetings
Thank you all for doing that.
On budgetary concerns. Real professional.
My one thing is just the abandoned buildings here in the city of Beckley. And then also Captain Morgan gave us a printout of the buildings downtown, what we own and what we don't own and how the leases are coming for us, the ones that we have. And what can we do if we're interested in selling them or if the city interested in doing something with them?
And that might be something for the land banks to look into.
I don't really have anything except potholes. When can cold patch start, Pam?
We're doing cold patch right now.
Okay. Because, you know, I don't have a lot of complaints in my world, but that's more.
I was out at Wally World today.
Queen Anne. I'm sorry.
And that, they have got tremendous patches on that Queen Anne. Is that, whose road is that?
We don't know.
Walmart says that they aren't responsible and the sporting goods or place says that they are not responsible. So we've done emergency things before.
That's what I was wondering.
It's awful. That's, Bros Hicks has brought that to our attention many times, that you could, your car could be swallowed in that, so.
Two almost hit head on because they were both missing potholes on the other side. It was not pretty.
I thought each business that's out there is supposed to be responsible to help keep their road.
Who is Frank?
The business places is out there. I always thought they were responsible.
Usually the government owns that place.
Oh, okay.
We have patched it before as a, as a favor. Those orders come from council, the mayor, for us to do so. If that's an in-kind favor y'all are willing to do, we can look into it.
You talking about the road that goes from Ragged Road to Walmart?
On the right in front of Bridgeport.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a road, the parking lot, they probably should, but I wouldn't have any problem.
You don't know who, who plows it?
I'd fix it's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well.
Unless it's the Walmart.
Well, I was going to say, I got asked that yesterday, but I mean, you know, me and my wife own the salon right across from it and I've never thought to pay attention on who plows it, but you know, maybe that's something we can try to, I don't know how we.
I did speak with Ed Skaggs, the manager of Walmart, and they said that corporate would not entertain anything with that. But it's in front of Bridgeport. I would think that they would be responsible for that, but it would be, I don't, if the developer.
I think, I'm pretty sure Walmart's people plows it.
Oh, no, okay. I'm sorry. The reaction?
I'll be real brief. I missed the last city council meeting and one of the things on the agenda was the, just getting a list of all the buildings we own, the leases, which ones are vacant. I had a productive meeting with our interim city manager, Mr. Gerald, today. And I'll just say that we, we're working real well to figure out a resolution of what, like Frank said, what to do with these buildings that we own. A lot of them were donated to us. Probably if we hadn't do it over here, we wouldn't accept it, but we are where we are. But anyway, we're, we're working towards that. Councilwoman Hunter?
A lot of companies do studies to determine if there is enough citizens to shop at their locations. One being Academy Sporting Goods in the former Kmart building, right? They have, they have traffic calming bumps in their parking lot. It would be perfect if they can have them and they get plowed. I don't know why the city could not do that to help LaRue. So that would be something that I'd like for us to, to entertain. I mean, it, it would be something that would, at least, it surely slows you down when you're in their parking lot. So if anybody is interested, look at what they have at, is it Academy Sporting Goods? Is that the name of it? All right. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I have just a few things. One of the big things is, Mr. Kelly, maybe you'll be able to answer this. It seems like I've been having a lot of trouble with my council email. I've noticed that my email got changed. I was always at large two, but now it's cody.reedy@beckley.org. Well, somebody messaged me and asked why no one had responded to their email. And I was like, did you send it to that? And they said, no, the website currently still states that everybody's Ward one, Ward two and so forth. And so then I started going and I was like, I don't have it. So I looked at my junk mail and I had like twenty emails from citizens that I guess were getting sent to my junk mail. So I don't know if that, if everybody else might be having that problem, but I've, so like the last week, I figured out, I think Thursday or Friday last week, I checked my junk and my regular now because I got a bunch of emails that coming through. I don't know if that's something, you think it's where they're sending it to like at large two and it's transferring through and it's going to my junk?
Well, it shouldn't be that because, because at, at large two and, and your Cody greedy are, are just aliases of each other. So they should be both going to the same mailbox. It shouldn't be a difference. It could be a couple of things. It, it could be the fact that we, we have just, we're in the process and almost completed the transition from beckley.org to beckley.gov. We activated to beckley.gov, so they're both exist right now. It could be a problem where they're, they're, they haven't finished going across the, across the flag. So it, it could be that. It could also be some of the, we put a lot of additional controls in to try to limit access in the system. I'll, I'll get, I'll get with my guys and we'll check it in the morning and see what we can find out.
I appreciate it. Yeah, y'all might want to check your junk mails. Because I was, like I said, I missed, I ended up finding out, I missed a few emails.
Well, and I would recommend it, you might want to go into, if you, if you have somebody who's, who's telling you that, might want to go ahead and list them as a, as a, you know, a, a good person.
Okay, so you can go ahead and report it?
Go in, go and list it that way.
All right, I'll do that. Okay, I appreciate it. That was, that, yeah. And then the only other thing is I want to thank Mr. Gerald. He's came in and like I said, I'm with Kip. I was super excited to see we got a workshop on a budget. I mean, that's something that I know I haven't been in. I've had a lot of good responses, you know, throughout the city department heads and stuff bragging that, you know, that they're getting to be involved and stuff. So I want to thank you for doing what you've done in the short amount of time and I think, I think we're on the right direction.
It's been an exciting week.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Gerald, is there anything you want to say?
It's just been an exciting week for me. Been certainly a pleasure working with the department heads and, and several of the community members. So I just want to thank you and for your hard work and appreciate it.
Thank you. And next item is old business. Old business. And on that is abandoned houses and sidewalks. Is there a council member that would like to speak a little further on the abandoned houses?
Well, first, in War Three, we got some houses been over for fourteen years. Been the same condition fourteen years. And every time I ask about it, it's, well, they in the process of either remodeling it, you know, after fourteen years, they are not planning on remodeling the house. It just need to be something that I think, I don't know what it's going to take for the landowners or the property owners or whoever to realize that they have to take care of the property. If not, I don't want to say they wouldn't need to turn them down because that's expensive. We really don't need this city, but some, something has to be done.
Yeah.
Because right to where I live, I can take it as six houses within, not even a four mile from my house that need to be torn down. Now, I'm not faulting the city, don't get me wrong. I fault the, the people that own the property.
The landowners.
The landowners and also the community as a whole because the only way people would know about these properties if we talk about the properties. And then sometimes the reason they don't want to talk about it because it's their own property. But something definitely need to be done because it's, it's sad that when you, in order for Beck to grow, and I understand we want downtown Beck to grow, we need that. But we need our properties owners, our, the neighborhoods to grow along with it. And the only way that's going to grow is we got to come in and say, what can we do to, to get this taken care of? And that is one of my biggest, I mean, one of those houses, I mean, like, it's been for fourteen years. It don't take fourteen years to tear down a house.
Are, are people living there or is it vacant?
No.
See that? Yeah.
No, they ain't living in a house for fourteen years.
Yeah, we've talked about several solutions or, you know, we talked with Captain Morgan, you know, do we start getting strict on some of these land? I, I mean, I know when I used to live off Harper Road, every house on that street looked immaculate except for the one right next door to ours. Except for the one right next door to ours. And, and it was just one of those things like you call code them for, you know, what do you do to get them to, you know, make them, just make it, you know, reputable, make the house look reputable? But anyway, we've had several conversations on that and I, I, I've told Donnie, I'm all for like, you know, and of course he talked, we'd have to hire a few more inspectors and things like that.
They, they need help for sure.
But anyway, does anybody else have anything else?
But it's not only the abandoned houses, it's the vacant lots. Attorney Fow, I would like to get with you if I can, Frank and I, because we are mostly, have all the abandoned houses and vacant lots that, the property, they do not pay property taxes. So when it goes to the state, then no one is responsible for the maintenance of the grass. So if we could get with you about trying to get that land bank ordinance completed. And I think that would help out.
I think we have, Donnie, do we have an ordinance? And did we?
Yeah, Mr. Fow.
Yeah. We, we are actually working on an ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
For council on that.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? What about the sidewalks? Is there someone from council that wants to, go ahead?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No.
South Cana and South Fed Street. I know those are state routes, but if we could get something done for those sidewalks to help to beautify the, the city, that would be great. And Miss Mary wanted me to bring up about she needs sidewalks on LaRue too.
Well, Harper Road, East Prince, Prince Street and also Neville Street and Main Street, probably every street in Beck.
I don't know when the last time the sidewalks have been, it's been a while.
Janine, Councilwoman Bullock, there was a municipality that wrote a grant to replace their sidewalks a year or two ago. And I'll do some, Pam, do you remember which municipality that was? Pam, do you remember which municipality that was, close to us? I don't remember if it was Princeton.
I know Lewisburg replaced it.
Lewisburg, yeah, and, and I'll look into that. It could be, I don't know whether they're CDBG monies, you know? I don't know, but we'll look into that, how those municipalities did it. Let's not reinvent the wheel.
Okay, thank you. Some of us are going to the West Virginia Municipal League next week, so we should be able to ask several questions there too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Something, you sure? Okay. Thank you, Council. We'll now move on to new business, and with new business, we've got several bids, uh, that I'll read aloud and pass them to the two at large. Uh, they'll get with, um, Chief Code Enforcement Officer Donna Morgan to review, so at this point, I'll go ahead and open them up. And this is for the demolition group six, although the first one, they combined, it's, it's got six and seven in there. So just bear with me. Okay, so, um, and Donnie, correct me if this is wrong, it's six to thirteen structures in the group of, group six, is that correct? Um, so they broke this down. This is, uh, looks like Reclaim Company LLC out of Fairmont, West Virginia. And they've done an estimate for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, all thirteen of them. Uh, the demolition group, uh, six for thirteen properties, and their quote is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Wow. For thirteen, so.
You said it was thirteen streets?
Thirteen.
Thirteen buildings.
Thirteen properties. Thirteen streets.
Well, I mean, thirteen properties. What war did you, I mean, cause, I mean, War, War Three has been overlooked for a long time. That's good, but I want to be down.
Okay, this is six as well. Okay, this quote is from Aster Oilfield Services out of Bel Air, Ohio. And again, for all thirteen properties, their quote comes in at a hundred thousand, two hundred dollars. One hundred thousand, two hundred dollars, so let me pass this one on to you. This one's from Empire Savage and Recycling out of Bluefield, West Virginia. Yeah, this one is only for two structures, one eighteen, that's seven? Oh, well, it had six on it, but okay. Good job, Donnie, good job. Well, I'll just go ahead and read this one. For, for seven, Empire Savage and Recycling for the two properties, one eighteen Antonio Avenue and North Vance Drive, a total of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Let's see.
I can't, what's there, something?
Okay.
So maybe I want to give one for six.
Okay, from Empire Savage and Recycling, this is the thirteen properties, um, and they have an estimated cost of eighty thousand dollars.
That was for group six, right?
Group six, thirteen properties.
Thirteen properties. They have their own landfill. That's why they're, well, they have their, they have their own landfill. There's two different groups.
All right, the next, uh, estimate is from Tom's Tear Down and Takeaway out of Charleston, West Virginia.
This is yours, all right?
Uh, this is for the thirteen properties, and they estimate it to be a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
That's your, that's your company right there. You love Tom's Tear Down.
Okay, so the, the next three are all for seven, group seven. So this is for the two properties, one eighteen Antonio Avenue and four eighty-nine North Vance. Uh, their estimate comes in at forty thou, forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Who?
For Tom's Tear Down.
Tom's Tear Down for.
And Takeaway.
Group seven.
Group seven. Okay, this estimate is from the, uh, Reclaim Company LLC that's in Fairmont for the two properties, uh, Antonio Avenue and four eighty-nine North Vance. Uh, their estimate comes in at seventy thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
He ripped it up.
And the last quote for group seven from Aster Oilfield Services in Ohio, for the two properties comes in at thirty-seven thousand, six fifty. There you go, have fun.
I will, I'll, I'll have a blast.
Uh, next item under new business, um, I think we have Mr. Brian Brown here today to speak.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, thank you, Councilman Bullock and Councilman Person Hunter. Um, I reached out to them and, uh, because we have kind of reached a critical point in our decision-making as to whether or not we're going to move forward with the development. The challenge that we, the challenges that we face is that obviously most of our development is on city property. The, being situated between the rail, around the rail to trails means that we have no sidewalks for our entrances. Um, there's no curbing for, and then water control for, for stormwater runoff becomes a challenge to handle. Out, uh, additionally, outdoor lighting and all of those things, and it's been difficult to have any conversations with the city about this. We initially reached out to Destinations by Design, since Destinations by Design was the company that the city hired to be able to do the rail to trail, um, design, redesign. So we figured if we partnered together, we would be able to facilitate conversations. They in turn wanted to charge us ninety thousand dollars to do the same work. Um, so then when Mayor Rapo left, he was saying that he didn't want to make any decisions as he was outgoing. And then Mr. Trump did not want to, because he was interim, so we lost basically all of last year waiting for Mr. Rizair. And then, of course, we know how that ended. So we are now at a point where we are two and a half years into holding costs on about one point two million dollars in, in expenditure. And before we go in and spend more money for engineering costs and our next level, we need to see, engage the city's level of interest in helping us to, um, create conversations to be able to move this, this project forward. So I'm going to very quickly go through our, um, master plan for the development.
Check with the, uh, switch on the side.
It's on.
They're pointing down this way.
So this is the existing building. It's a two-story building. The lower level of the building is going to be turned into like a capital market style, um, facility where people can sell goods, produce, um, and wares. There'll also be two large exterior balconies on the interior side, which will overlook a courtyard. This will be for lower and upper. Upstairs will be a three hundred person, um, capacity event center, good for weddings, um, as well as meetings with a commercial kitchen in the back. We've also included bridal suites and groom suites in the facility for, um, to host weddings. The balconies here will be on the interior side, and the building becomes this. So this is the idea to bring vibrancy back to Beckley. Beckley is the ideal location situated in the middle of the gorge development and the newest, you know, where the newest national park. We have all of the visitors from Fayetteville staying on exit forty-four, and we're getting none of that traffic down into the city. So this gives Beck, Beckley a destination. It gives us an identity, and it gives us a place to go together and have fun. This is another view of that. This is an example of the types of sidewalks that we would need to have developed. Kind of a re-situation of the rail to trail, pulling it off to one side to allow parking along that side of the street. This is the second building, um, and then if you see in the back, those are the problem storage units that house lots of vagrants. Um, all of these buildings, except the double-decker, have been vandalized and completely removed of all copper. So this small one becomes a restaurant, and we're going to do an expansion off of the side. It should be reconfigured, and this would be what we end up with. And again, this courtyard would be on the side so that people can eat outside. It's also on the interior side, so in the middle would be an outdoor park where we have a stage where people can do live performances, um, and that sort of thing. You could also have a, a meeting or a party out there as well. So this building here, this is the eyesore, this is the problem too, that, uh, Captain Morgan's been working on for a few years. That building is owned and half of it is collapsed. It is, um, we do not own it. It is owned by, um, Mr. Lawson, I believe is his name, the former city, um, engineer. He is, uh, this whole section is completely collapsed all the way back, which has caused us some issues, and we've had to have termite treatments because of all of the decaying wood that's in there. Um, these two buildings will become two restaurants. It's split with shared bathrooms. There's no interior render in this one. That's a total of six, six hundred square feet. I'm going to click through these quickly. There's so many. So it becomes this building here. At the time that we were working on this proposal, we were working with a company out of, um, out of Morgantown. They have several different restaurants. They were going to come and bring one here, but we hit so many delays, and then they had some funding challenges. So in this presentation, you will see their name, um, but they are no longer, uh, moving into this space. This is currently the Bosco Building, and if you've seen it, you go down Central Avenue on the left-hand side. So this becomes the patio space, and this becomes an extended patio as well along the rail to trail side heading toward Mavs guy. Once you leave the building facade, we no longer own any of that property. So in order for us to do any of the patios or sidewalks, we need to have the city's cooperation and participation in it. Upstairs, we're going to have a, currently we have a, um, barbecue restaurant interested, and then we were going to do a taproom downstairs. I apologize. I would have had this much more organized, however, um, I just kind of found out at three o'clock today. So I would have had the engineers and the architects as well. So that's another angle fro, from the side. And then, this was the old, um, Nihai Bottling Plant, so we were going to do a lot of things to kind of pull back that history into the building. This is the entrance to the taproom down below. So it gives us some options, some things to do, as well as some, uh, some culture and identity. So these, there are two buildings. Those two get combined together to create this new space. So we're going to open them up, get rid of the second floors, really, um, bring some really cool dining elements to the city. And it has an outdoor patio that overlooks that center courtyard, and it becomes this building. And again, we need all of the sidewalks and curbs and egress to our buildings. So this is the current site plan of all the buildings that we have, and, let's see, this is basically, this is the Lawson Building here that, um, we would love if the city could help to finish pushing that over. And, um, it would be ideal for us to have parking there. So this is what the city proposed with the district by the Destination by Design plan that you all had already started working on. We made slight adjustments and just incorporated it into our overall design to save costs, as well as since, you know, you've already done the legwork on incorporating that. There's there's a, a few things in here that was not leaving enough room for egress in and out of the buildings. We had some slight adjustments there to create nice, nice streetscapes, so that the traffic would be, um, out of the way and not in, in danger of running over any pedestrians. And then people would still have the ability to walk back and forth. People could park along the right side of the road and then go up bench lane and around to kind of keep traffic moving. So this is an example of the courtyard. This is the double-decker building. This is the small restaurant to the side. And then we have this courtyard here in the middle for live performances and gatherings. And again, this is, these go back to the Destination by Design conceptual drawings that the city invented. And we feel like the, what we are designing completely integrates into where the, the direction that the city was looking to go in hiring, um, Destination by Design to create this whole flow. So we would just like to know if you all are interested in helping with us, at least to sit down and have conversations so that we can move things forward. Unfortunately, the city does not have a development department, which would be ideal, and something that does need to be created so that we have strict avenues, and you know exactly what you need to do and, um, who to go to. Here, it's, it's kind of, we go to, to Captain Morgan, who's been always willing and happy to help. However, he is wearing many hats, and, you know, that's not his primary job function. So things kind of get passed between people. Things get left to, uh, fall by the wayside, and it becomes difficult to move a project along in a timely manner. So as we are making plans for the city, I hope that's certainly something that remains on the radar, that we do need a department for planning and development. Are there any questions about what I have shown so far?
That is brilliant, I'm ready to go in there. Amazing, um, Mr. Gerald.
Yes ma'am.
What do you think, since you helped to construct a lot of the buildings here?
I'd be very willing to speak with Mr. Brown. He tried to schedule an appointment with me and I had to delay it because we have to get a balanced budget by Thursday, so, so I'll be glad to give him a call. Speak with him.
So you're looking at the city to mainly construct the sidewalks and?
Well, we have to kinda create, one, there has to be permission for us to be able to construct on the, on city property. If the city wants to give us the property on the, along the side of the Bosco Building, the building directly behind us already kinda took over that space, the heating company, heating and cooling company. They fenced it in and store things there. I don't know if that would be more appropriate, however, we do need to be able to have permission to construct. We need sidewalks and curbing and then that's gonna involve, you know, drainage and, and stormwater. So creating plans for those, we also have to unearth the rail-to-trail to be able to bring in and upgrade the outdated water and sewer that's down there. Because these buildings were manufacturing, they were never, they didn't have the capacity to, to, for all of the volume of water and waste that will be in the, in the new intended use. So we need to upgrade water, sewer, which involves another thing, the rail-to-trail, then having to put that back. And new lightning outside.
So Attorney Foul, I have a question for you. Will any of the commissions have to get involved, like the planning commission?
Yeah.
Zoning, have they already?
We've been kinda going back and forth with, with Captain Morgan, however, I think the challenge that we have is creating a synergy, because one hand wasn't really trying to move until we had all the pieces in order. And I think we have kinda realized that these pieces are not coming anytime soon. We do have an interim city manager, but last time, Mr. Trump was unwilling to make any decisions, because he, I don't know if he didn't have the power, authority, or just felt it to be not a proper thing to do, because he was interim. So, there's a power flow kind of an, uh, challenge that we have to, if there's an interim, do they have the power and authority to make decisions? Or how does that happen work and flow? And, obviously, we don't expect the city to shoulder the cost of all of this, but certainly participating in areas where the, you know, the city would, would be willing to help would be appreciated.
Have you had the opportunity to sit down with all the department heads that would help you make this happen? Cause I think you did a very good presentation and you're a very outstanding person as far as in the city of Beckley. I think you did a good job right there. But saying to me that all the department heads, whatever you need, need to sit down at a table and see what can happen and see what we can bring to the table to help you.
That would be great.
So what's the status on the rundown building, Captain Morgan? Cause I drove down there to see what was gonna go and I thought, oh no. I didn't know which property was yours.
We sent notice and order and he's got an attorney, so.
Okay.
But, I can use that over to Mr. Foul. We sent notice and orders to Mr. Lawson on the building and he's got an attorney now, so we're going through that process.
That's a process that will eventually go to municipal court, if we can get it resolved.
Some of the first steps would be
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Deciding on the city, the using of the right-of-way. I don't know, Mr. Foul would have to tell you what would be involved there, but, and then the next step is getting the utilities solved. And then we, once we get that, Mr. Brown could get a site plan and we could take it before Planning Commission.
Okay.
See, that's what I was saying earlier, you know, you need to, all, everybody's, you need to be involved, you need to come down to a table and sit down to, you see, we can give the same presentation he just showed right there, to see exactly what needs to be done. Because I, I tell you what, that's very impressive, in the end, very impressive.
When you say the permission for the alleyway, what, what, are you talking about beside the Bosco Building? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, the city, the right-of-way goes up to the, right up to the front of all the buildings.
Okay.
So the sidewalks and everything in that proposal, there would have to be some kinda decision or something made on that, for permissions.
So that would need to be the first step?
I don't know what that would take.
Is it just council?
So is that something that we can actually donate, or is that something that we can actually? He, he can petition us to close it, I guess. I don't know. Is that something like an alleyway, Mr. Foul?
Well, we have to determine exactly.
Yeah, exactly where it's at.
What it is needed, where it's located. There is, a procedure can be used for city property to be, to be donated, if that's, if that can be done without interfering with the actual right-of-way for the public there. We can certainly sit down with the department heads and, and figure out what needs, needs to happen tonight, it's the first time we've really discussed trying to, to move this forward. And it sounds like the administration appears certainly willing to, to work with you to see what can be done. When we deal with the rails-to-trails, we have to be very cautious about how we use that. That was donated to us by the railroad company. And there, there's a, a limit to what we can do with that, other than use it for a specific rails-to-trails, as it's being used today. But I, I think the city would certainly be willing to sit down and, and work with you to try to determine what path you may have to go forward with this.
And then what about the utilities? Who handles that part?
Well, we have engineers that are making the syntax as it's going in and they've kinda started the process, but, you know, once you get engineers involved, you know, there's a substantial check that needs to be written. And we've been, you know, sitting and, I have three other partners and we're just kinda sitting back going, are we gonna sink more money here and sit for another two years? Or are we just going to abandon ship and move forward with a different project? Because, you know, holding costs are expensive. You know, we're paying like twelve thousand dollars a year for three, for three vacant buildings and a, and a lot, just in taxes, you know, and then there's stormwater that they charge us for. So there's all of these fees for a building that's just sitting. So, you know, it's buildings that are just like.
Mr. Brown, do you have companies, you said a barbecue company is already interested?
They are, so we've started renovating the Bosco Building. Doing some light reno. I'm gonna move my office there initially. And then, so we can work on the taproom. Because just for financing reasons, if I'm owner occupied in there, we are, we're available to have some additional funding, that's, you know, grant money. So I'm gonna temporarily relocate there and then shift my office and then move them in there and then keep rolling the dice if we're able to get the permission to, to get the sidewalks and all. This spring, we were also, and still are trying to open up a farmer's market along there. Captain Morgan is meeting us tomorrow to kinda walk it. We would like to open up the buildings, bring vendors in, we've got farmers that wanna come and bring fresh produce, bring food trucks down there, do live music, at least set an atmosphere and give, you know, a destination for people and something to do that's plenty exciting.
I mean, I, I think we just go with the suggestion of, like, Mr. Brown, Mr. Morgan, and Mr. Gerald sit down and, you know, get a ballpark of what the first steps are and then either have a workshop before one of the next council meetings or, or present to us at council and get from there. But I, I think right now, we just need to figure out what the dead-set plan is.
Mr. Foul, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but how long do you think this process with Mr. Lawson having a, an attorney, how long would that take to get to municipal court?
I, I don't have a crystal ball on that. We do. We, we will continue pursuing that, we will eventually get that one resolved.
So who will be getting in touch with Mr. Brown in reference to a date of where the department heads?
I'll be glad to.
Can get together, okay. I just
No problem.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's part of the government and me.
I'll be glad to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Okay, then we'll move on to public comments. Anthony, is there anyone on the phone or online? That's where I need to read this.
We do have people that attend us, we don't care just to read that.
Sure. Uh, so for public comments, if you're calling by phone, just dial star three to raise your hand. If you're connected by computer, just click the hand icon on the participants panel if you wish to speak. In the meantime, we'll start. As you know, come up, state your name, your address, and keep it to three minutes. Jessica will let you know when you're at two minutes and thirty seconds. Barry West, you got the floor first.
Good evening and thank you. Now, I would like for you all to visit the alleyways. Now, you're saying you don't own the alleyways, but you have in the past. And, you can't hear me? So you have in the past, you own the alleyways, and I paid to have mine done. Now, this other place over, over next to me, those trees are leaning. Now, I don't need to have to go to court again, cause I just went to court and spent over a thousand and some dollars to get a tree cut down by my house. To get, to keep my property from blowing up on the gas line and roots wrapping around my gas line and water lines. So if you all can get those trees down, it's only one section left there on where I'm at. And the rest of the alleyway, everybody is paying. So if those people that has brought that property, they're not gonna, uh, uh, if I ask them to cut it down, the trees down, they're not gonna do it. But somebody try to say, I and them have to contribute to have them cut down. No, I don't think so. Cause I'm not spending another dime in a tree over there. And also, can we get LaRue Avenue? I know it's bad places everywhere, but can we get that as a one-way through there? So I don't have to buy the one bushel of apples to throw out at them when they come speeding past. It is sad that I have had to come out here as many times asking for things to be done. We got tractor and trailers coming down through there in the wee hours of the morning. Waking everybody up and everything. But it's pretty rough. And I appreciate what you all are trying to do with the strips and if you can do the sidewalks and things, we have kids walking, getting off the bus and almost getting hit too. So if you all can do that, it would be appreciated. And, you know, try to see about those trees. Because you all don't wanna see my face if one of those trees fall on that big building back there. So I would appreciate it if you all can get those trees cut down. And thank you.
You got it, thank you Mary.
Thank you.
Next up, Tom Mosley.
Oh, here it is. How are you all? So, I'm gonna start out, how many of you drive down your wards? How many of you have been down through there lately? They're, they're a mess. We all talked about the potholes, the sidewalks, a lot of disasters. I know we've got, we've had a bad winter, so we understand why that's gonna happen. My biggest pet peeve with it right now is the litter. I don't know, Councilman Williams, unless you've been down Ward Three, but it's getting really bad.
Where's is it?
In Ward Three. There's litter all up and down Hole, Elkins, Canoa Avenue, there's some trash cans over there where that block wall's at. They're overflowing all the time. So I don't know if there's something we can do for some litter control through there, you know, hold some people accountable, but it's, it's disastrous. And if we don't start taking our city back and start holding people accountable, we're not gonna have a city. You, you know, it's shameful. When my wife and I decided to stay there, that place I've said it a hundred times, looked like Fred Rogers neighborhood. You know, now it looks like a war zone. I've been through Ward Three quite a bit in the last few weeks, been down Urt, parts of Urt is horrible. So if there's some kind of assistance, you know, Mr. Williams, you can get us over there, it would be appreciated, something we can do to at least get the trash picked up.
No problem, I mean, I think, I think I just made the comment myself about Ward Three.
Right.
So, but you live in, on your street, and I know your street is very well, I tab your street very well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I can look into that, no problem.
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Mosley, we, Raleigh County Make-It-Shine is getting ready to have litter sweeps all over the city and the county. The last Thursday of every month, it's gonna be March twenty-seventh, is our first litter sweep. Uh, we're gonna do cigarette litter all up and down uptown and in the alley, but we're also gonna do a litter index and see where the litter is. Now, wind-blown debris goes and it, it stops, but we, we need to know where to start and, and Raleigh County Make-It-Shine is getting ready to do that. We're very, very excited. Uh, the chamber put it out there last week, but we'll supply residents with litter grabbers, safety vests, Board of Public Works picks up the litter and then brings it to the landfill so the, the, the litter will be picked up, but I'll get with you about a litter, a litter sweep, okay?
Thank you, Sherri. Uh, next up, Pam Upton.
I just wanted to touch on a point with the Sorey Coak Animal Rescue and just clarify that Sorey Coak Animal Rescue is its own entity, it's its own 501(c)(3) and not connected to the shelter. They just hold a shelter to place animals. So I just want that to be considered when you're ta, because you table their grant money. And I also wanted, I did not know the shelter had changed until you made your statement. Also wanted to, um, I volunteered there for years and I've walked dogs for them. I've been involved in huskies, specifically Siberian Husky Rescue for years. I've worked with a lot of out-of-state rescues and pulled huskies from that shelter and placed them with Husky Rescues that specialize in huskies. But I've never been there where I've not been allowed to walk back. I find that highly suspect and I'm asking to please pay attention to that and to also give Tanya her money, cause she does great work for our area.
Anthony, we're good?
We're good.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is executive session regarding terms of real estate leases. So may I have a motion to enter into executive session? Second? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
Just to make sure.
I'm getting the message from her tomorrow, and I'll get little notes to take pictures of.
You can read on her chicken scratch.
You can pull it off. That'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Somebody was trying to tell me that y'all like to still do private events.
And I'm just like, I'm gonna talk to them about that, because I haven't heard anything, and I don't want them to know.
Oh, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're back to the main event.
Yeah.
We'll see you later.
I'm always like, I'm not gonna say.
I know, I have the problem, but I mean, I.
Right.
But you can only do X number?
Can I share mine?
You just look at some of this.
Want to be there.
Here's probably one.
It's never.
No, I think it's, it's been kind of popular, but it crawls.
Just the D and S reflected in that.
Yeah, I think that's all I'm saying. I know things ask me about that. I'm thinking probably, because none of the things things ask about.
No, it shouldn't, no, would affect anything.
We, we had some, security.
Oh, you guys, let's come and say, do you?
Things that were getting kicked are now getting, getting jobs.
Whitelists, everything. I see him, especially with like new young councilites, they think everything's coming to this. What's the provide? General calendar. So yeah.
Yeah, and we can make some tests, but I don't know if they all got more to see, you think, because I, we, some of those things. We just kind of wait, see if it's possible. But I think some of these.
Have you never seen email?
I mean, I do, I gotta look yourself, I can't even go.
And that's what, I guess. Oh, it's maybe in the spam, I think.
Yeah.
What, what they all say.
What's wrong with you, babe?
Come on, explain yourself.
I'm selecting.
I think it's thirty-six. That's why I said, but she's like, same.
What do you think about? Yeah, yeah. You don't care if it's the flip of that slide, but for transition, transition. But this is just one of the ways that, that we set this up. Well, ultimately, it's, there's no delay, because it's pulling the law feed. What, what happened on Maureen is we would install a front-end splitter right here. And it would directly feed into their equipment. We were, they found our camera, our camera equipment, control center. But it just, you know, an easier option to see content.
Well, this, this is pretty nice right here. Actually, that's, that's much better than I thought. I was, I was expecting something that was gonna be sort of intrusive there. As I might say, but this is, this is really good. Even me, I can't see crap. I take my glasses off, right? There, it's clear. It's, it's bright. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And realistically, we won't leave. We don't even have to have one for county council members.
Have one of the other, yeah, yeah, exactly. They can sit here and here, and I mean, we both see that. I mean, I can, I can look over here and see that, but if I'm having trouble seeing that, especially if you get up here and they got a little trouble seeing something, or if you get something that we're displaying on the back instead of on that, you know, you can look at this and I think it's pretty good. If we get some.
To, to consider is if you guys wanted to put a TV in there, but there's, there's certain power points. Somebody comes in and likes to add a lot of content like me. I think you heard something, read the content about that. Well, you're gonna have to look back and reflect on that documentation. I think it just adds layer to layer.
Yeah, I think it, and I think some people who, who might need it, who wouldn't speak up, maybe. Yeah, so, so we probably need to get some pricing off the end and see what that would, see what that would cost to do that.
Is that one point setup? Yeah, that's my case.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I don't know, we worked with that before those things, they life changers.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's great. I can see those.
This display, and we can ask them, but for this, it's only, there's other models, they don't go just for this one. I think it's beneficial.
Yeah, I think it would be very, very helpful. Yeah, so. Get, get with him and see, get some, get some, an estimate for him, see what he did.
Okay. Yeah, I know it was kind of unexpected, but since he had it, I thought we might as well just see how it put up here for fun.
I said, I can stand right here and look at it.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not. I can think of a lot of presentation workshops that has been done in there where they would have made it so much easier. You do away with the need for a projector altogether.
Yeah. What, what we need, about five, five of those?
Yeah, about five. And then that way you only need once. And you're good for any scenario, even if everybody's sitting around.
I mean, if he could get that big TV put up here somewhere.
Yeah, that's why I put that.
It's seven degrees. It's too cold for a kid, it's too, too. There for a minute, I was only going to city council, and I was told this, I'm gonna cover this one. Yeah, all right. Yeah, that, that's one thing, and I'm very thankful I get paid for it, so. It, it sucks giving up the time, but I'm compensated. They talked to all I can talk. Of course, Nate has got some experience there, so. No, actually, I'm just gonna pick up a pizza from out, uh, Cool Seas. Oh, that's a change. I think that's a good spot in two years. Well, just as you remember I said, when, when Rose told me I decided I'd make it. Yeah. Rose told me I decided, so I was undecided, maybe I'll just. But Rose told me I decided I wanted to. Can I make seats? Yeah. Yeah. So that's all we're gonna get. Two, fifteen years. I'm around to feel about that. I said lots of. I think what we're still, I think it's. And, and some of that's what, you can't tell by looking at what they're wearing. People, things are all, it's not one of those things that I'm not sure what's. But I'm. But I got a whole ton of, of Richard talking about. She said, she says now when I'm in state, she will get me signed, you know, to look at it. I was gonna say, she has me signed. I think I think. A bunch of, a bunch of, they have, they're only, so. We have twenty-eight sites, we're considering five of them. We have twenty eight sites, we're considering five of them, so. You're, you're building two, two. From your praise, what are your praise six days? So all those things are just on the spy way, there's one line, that's what I'm saying, that gets you late two months, and then we've got the, the big two K, five or whatever goes to. That, that carries the image. And so, so what you're paying them, was you're paying them for, to pay them other, length of each year, each year, that's a separate cost. It's a lot less expensive, I thought, it's less expensive on the secondary side, and there's more office stuff. And so you, you pay, like, for your, your business based on the speed of the route, so I cut my speed. I cut those down, I cut it down to the cheapest amount I can get. Now, that's still twenty five big direct fibers, so it's still pretty good, cause I could go on, it's the same cost as twenty five, like, yeah. So, the new south side, of course, is still, is still speed, so I think yours is, is like a hundred, so. If you look, if you look at there, so, uh, cause, uh, I can see like the last year, today, I can see the last, the name, last week, last thirty days, for last year, and I can see if, if this, this is a bandwidth, this is no bandwidth, this is a, all your sites are. So, so if I look at your, and for your site, you might, you might be coming up like this, maybe, with this one, maybe it's a peak out here. I'm looking at some of your sites, and therefore these dots, you never see it.
Right.
So that's why, if we're coming back, you got to have connected, you, you, you get a, get a chance, yeah, so you do that, and then when I, when I, internet, I take the first. But it is, just the internet, and I took everybody's other sites, and that, that also got a hundred sites, and then I allocated back most of the other sites. So just, you know, across the city, we have thirty sites, you've got four of them, you're, I think, four times that. So that's, that's what it's, and then I did allocate to you all, uh, the cost of managed text response. That's all that you, so, so you get a grant, so it may be in your budget. Yeah. We, we finally, I just found out yesterday, they, they're almost already paid, so. So, so we, we, and so, and then other big costs we had was for, was three sixty five, that was seventy thousand. Well, everybody, everybody that has an email address has, if they've got a computer, if they have a computer, they get office three sixty five, or they get the full one, or seven. If they got a computer, if they had, if they just had an email address, then, then they just had exchange, so if you look on that list I gave you, the list didn't say, some says exchange, some, some, I didn't say. And then we have a component for your own, which is a different. So that's a separate cost.
Fifteen administrations?
Well, but, I get, if you looked at it, and see how many PCs you have, it's just. You know, if you got a question, I'm gonna play, jump in and after, we'll try and give us something. So, the, so, so, I'm gonna say, answer any questions, see what's going on, but you know, we've got, we need any questions about. I mean, we have, yes, we have, we need all this, it's just like buttons, we got, we got, we got, it's just like buttons, it says. Thank you. Fifty one back. The final challenge, should just be, we got two P O R's, and we have, we have, we just got five, and I said, any other function, I have a deal, they go say, or. And then, you know, so, but, but again, but it, and then, then I started with that, and I said, what, exactly, I said, it's what they, it's that's what somebody's put in there for. That's a project, no, that's a whole, I mean, it's two hundred, just, just, I, just places.
Cause we're pending, saying, hey, just on the years' budget, which was already in there, I.
Exactly.
It's your budget.
And, and where we like, I want to see, I want to let them find, what if, that's, I think I got the phone, I got every phone, so. So, I, I, what I used to do on my budget, up until I was. She's up, just, just, you know, you have everything else. Um, and, and we could, we could do a lot of stuff, and there were things coming in that worked for the. So, but, but it's just, okay, I think for somebody, then when people start looking at, I do, I'd say, I, I just saw a, I saw that. So what's what I used to do was I would take all my, I listed, I listed every item, they have a contract, so, and the real thing, so, I'm an officer, and then I'd have two, two, from, you got a thing, what it was. And then actually, and then I'm getting some work, and I put on the name, raw, on the screen. Exactly, and then I'd say, okay, this is first to have least, but you're on, and I have this, I have a number, and if you don't know what, what settlement was, then I had to sell, like, was the place, or, you know, forensic system for. But I didn't do it last year, it's nothing right, 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 I mean, they give you a sheet, so, you know, and I felt, I felt, I felt, I felt more. Your respect to the.
I just felt more than I expected. They were trying to, like, house my arse. He laid that body, and I was like, oh, man, it's like a.
You're gonna be a lot of reading, I think, I think the signals stay the right, but I did come. Okay, that's what, that's what I said, I can, so, if you need them, I just said, listen, I was like, yeah, I think, what I said, the person that I got, he said, well, don't catch yourselves, sure.
But there you go, she might like.
Like last year, last year, I think it was. No. He's like that, and you're, you don't get much, they, so, you're thicker hood.
He always said it's one part. Yeah. Jessica's helped me more learn about the budget than anyone, cause I've had to ask personally, how much do I have to hear?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't hear. It's been a long time.
There's kind of a constant, just like, we don't get to one hundred percent.
Just go for it.
It doesn't do that. That's like, nice, good content. Absolutely. Right, minimalism. You make it some, so. They might set plans. Definitely, but it's not. But I have them, I have them, I have those things. So, that's what I love about them. Yeah. Help, yes, I said, right, somebody just kind of, or see it, right? And I was talking about clearly, it's not, this is probably, it's not that important. Well, I think, I think you should be aware of that more. And I said, well, yeah, I agree with you, you know, who can manage, and I said, well, the ju- the judge. And we got a judge, it's a, for your opportunity, you know.
So, you're dropping back, you know, for him.
Yeah.
It's always like a sad, hollow.
Yeah.
Change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you, something, he, he's not, he's not there, he's.
It was, it was not that, it was, it was like, scored fifty five, or something.
He's starting to get it, oh, he looks like. But that's the problem, so I started getting, I said, no, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta say that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is that one of them?
But, uh, he's.
Something, the child, turn the thing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I was thinking. Just lost up and did, that's the way we went up.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, but, uh, there's, there's a lot of people doing their job, when especially. They've done for years, they've done for years, benefits. Um, the same was, it was nice. And then, and for the time, they were, they were, six hours a week, fifty two weeks a year.
Yeah.
And it's about that, by, if you're moving.
And, and it's hard for me, loves it, it's, yeah.
Not, it's, that's, and, and everybody else must say, so, so, they, they, that's just like, we're more than.
That's why I was like, that's two thousand twelve, so. Cause it's never deactivated. And they came up and they just kind of made it, they just, they're here.
Cause he, they have a head, he's, 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 and they both have been gone at the same time.
Yeah.
And, and I said, I'll tell them all night, you might like them, but I'm gonna tell them.
Yeah, well, maybe if you hear a colleague.
And if you want, my opinion, I think it wasn't, it was, it was. I think they were both in it together, they were both, uh, working towards him, leading to the same attorney, and paying the same salary as was their goal, that was their agenda, that's what they wanted. That's why I was there when he interviewed all of those people from the attorneys, and all the, 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 the goals, to get him, and, and, it's like, something, pay raise, that, 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 that. They worked together all the time.
So, recent, I think, times, I'll say, probably, we don't know. Yeah. Yeah. I watch, sorry.
Yeah, good, good, yeah. No, I'm sorry, I can't. I'm playing my end, it's, it's a end of fault, I'm sorry.
It's alright, I, I'm, I'm, I'll accept blame, because. I know you haven't done that, hey. Yeah, thanks, man.
You know.
I think I can see about the last. They would have been, how long, it took, so.
Absolutely, hit me like.
I mean, it's my.
Good, hey, you good, hey, okay.
Seven, twenty three, eleven? Seven dollar a page? Now, I got your phone, huh?
And then it stays until she has received it from the system after they've stayed.
What's in the hatch?
And see how long it's been.
I just got that too.
Yeah.
Plan go see.
Now, would this, would this action plan, would it be?
We won't have our, we won't have our country boys win.
Is, is this a?
Go ahead and come on in.
Say four different sheriffs man football team in the corner for two days. God been sleeping man.
Yeah, I've been getting populated after.
Well, I live on Danny's street. Uh, you don't be careful.
I think they hide them from us.
What, what kind of?
Say when I was. Yeah.
Darkness.
You said that joke a little bit in my head.
No, I, there were none that surprised me.
Well, they left all that stuff so they're coming back.
And, and.
In the jacket.
Brian and then.
The jacket?
I'll take pictures. Right now I. Even though we're texting. Yeah, I don't like leaving our stuff to the system.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it's something that I.
Wasn't it like you had?
Yeah.
Sam. It was still being right in there.
Yeah.
I want his man.
So. The, the perfect thing for that scenario is gonna be.
Why do y'all say that some food?
I know, right? No dinner back there.
Yes, your hip. Y'all been back there eating dinner.
My gosh.
I've been ate, I've been ate for over twenty-four hours.
We're gonna tell the new interim city manager to save it for the next meeting.
We're gonna be here till midnight.
I'm waiting for dinner. Pass out, all of that is a ghost in a dream tonight.
Can I still sit on the city council bench? That's what they were calling it the other day.
Oh, what?
Yeah. When I was there.
Oh, I'm here.
Yeah, this is the city council bench.
I've been, I've been. No, they're the manager. We, we, we'll put you right up in the pulpit. I told Leslie, there's a bar down there. She's like, we can't stay, but I was like, find a way to stay. Oh, put you in the pulpit. Find a way, I, I.
You got to trust me. I don't know, I don't care.
I know, right? We'll get you, yeah, we'll get it.
You just let me know for what you want done.
Yeah.
I'll take care of it.
Sure. There'll be troublemaker.
Okay. Agreed. Anyway, we'll talk about that. Everybody seated? Uh, may I have a, uh, motion to enter back into regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay? Alright, thank you council. Though for the business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yeah. Good job.
I gotta read on that.
I think that's a much better. And two years, that's the next year's list.
Well, just as you remember I said, uh, when, when, when Bruce told me I decided I'd make it. Yeah. Was I beside the table? First of all, he says.
Oh. Can't make sense.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's what I'm gonna get. Uh.
Not bad. You cut. But.
After all this time, I'm a heat and tear and tear. Two, fifteen years. And it's only because. It's been a thousand years. And around to. I said lots of times. They had gone by the place somewhere. Things that last things. Cause I think what we're still. Built the land. Or like it's not, it's not. And, and some of those. You can't tell by looking at. People.
Yeah.
Things are all. It's not those things that I'm not sure what's my business. But. Uh, but, uh, I, I got a whole ton of. Picture to talk about, she said, well, she does not want to sell her estate. She will get me some. To look at. I was gonna say. She has my center. I was gonna say. She was also calling.
Doing a paper.
Oh, man.
So like, but you, but you play after. There's like, there's a link called. So. We have twenty-eight. Sites right in the city. Your, your building. To, to. Edge from. From your pre, one of your precincts taken. So all those things, there's almost. There's one line that was written. That, that gets you late two months. And then we've got the, the, they took a five or whatever it goes to. That was. Uh, that, that carries the image. And so, so what you're paying for, what you're paying for. To pay my, my late time. Each of your, each of your. That's a separate. It was a lot less expensive. Less expensive on the second side. And so. And here's where all of this stuff. And so you, you pay. Like for your, your business based on the speed. So I cut it down. Precious. I cut those down. I cut it down to the cheapest one. Now, that's still twenty-five big direct fireworks, so it's still pretty good. Cause I could go off. Cause the same cost as twenty-five. So the reduced sound down, yours is still. So I think yours is like a hundred and eighty. If you look, if you look at it. Cause we saw enough. I can see like the last security day, I can see the last. Today, actually, last thirty days for last year. And I can see if, if this, if this is your bam, this is no bam, this is.
All of that.
Uh, all your sites have. Stay awesome. So, so if I look at your. And for your site, you might, you might be coming up like this. Okay, with this one, maybe a peak out here. I'm looking at some of your sites and therefore these dots down at the bottom, you never see anything. Uh, so that's my, if we're coming back, you got to have connectivity. You get there, you get. Get your chance. Yeah. So you do that. And then what? Put the lane on the internet. I take. But, but it is. Just the internet. And I took everybody's number sites. But that was about a hundred sites. And then I allocated back based on the numbers. So just, you know, across the city, we have thirty sites. You've got. Four, then you're. Yeah, a lot. Four times a year. So that's, that's what. And then I did allocate to you all. Uh, the cost of management tax response. That's all that you can get. That's all that's granted. So it may be in your budget. It's in my budget. Yeah. It's like a. We found, we found it just, I just found out yesterday, one day. We're almost on pay. So. So, so we, we, and so, and then double big costs we had. Those three sixty-five. Cost seventy thousand.
Well.
Everybody, everybody that has an email address has. If they've got a computer, if they got a computer, they get those three sixty-five. Or they could. If they've got a computer. If they had, if they just had an email address, then they, then they just had exchange. So if you look on that list I gave you. The list didn't say, some of it says exchange, some of it doesn't say.
No.
Uh, and then we have. So that's a separate.
Cause I didn't answer. Fifteen administrations?
Well. But, I get, if you looked at it, you'd see how many PCs you've done. You don't really look at it, you know, part of you get a question. I hope I'm a play. Jumping in. So leave. Just gonna say. Answer any questions. Same question, same thing's going on, but you know, we've been going on. I need any questions for the. I see. Yes. We need all this. It's just like fun. We got. Maybe he was asking for a question. Why this is. Thank you. Fifty-one back. You got no opinion. The final challenge. Should just be, you know, we got three, two P R I's. And we have all. Just got five. And I said, any other final challenge? People have got to say. And then. But. But again, but. It's, it's. And then, then I started looking at it and I said, what time is that? I said, it's what it is, is that's what somebody's put on it for. There's. Just, uh. Just like.
Cause I'm never gonna say. They just don't hear your budget, which is already in there.
Exactly.
They always tell you, this is your budget.
Yes. And, and. I couldn't watch this. I left on the phone. I mean, I got the phone, I got every phone, so.
Yeah, that's athletes.
So. So, I, I, what I used to do on my budget.
Now, I'm taking wipes.
Just. You have everything else. Um, and, and we have, and they have a lot of stuff. There were things I would pay in that work for the. So. So, but, but it's just. I think. Then when people start looking at. But to say. So. So what's why I used to do was I would take on my. First, I listed, I listed every item. Did they have a contract? Real good. I'm an old guy. And then I have two, two, three, four, five things. What was? And then actually, and then I kept it from where I'm not looking. Name brought on the screen. I'm. I didn't, I didn't. Say, okay, this is first to. And I just. I had a lot of. Didn't know what, what settlement was. Then I had it self like was the place the board reviewed that forensic system for. Self, I was prepared. I'm trying to come to my. But I didn't do it last year. I mean, they give you a sheet or something, you know. I can feel like. I just. And all. You respect it.
I just felt.
I don't think. Yeah.
Remember. You lay their body. And all. I made it cause I couldn't.
They all. If you're. I think they just see most of their life. And it's got like. Okay, yeah, that's what was. So I can. If you think. I think. The person that. He said, well, catch yourself a short.
But they're gonna shame out last name. Your budget doesn't.
Nope.
I'm gonna say they ask me. But see.
Like last year, last year's.
No.
And you're, you don't get a budget.
He always said twenty bucks.
Yeah.
Jessica's helped me more learn about the budget than anyone. Cause I've had to ask personally. How much do I have in here?
Yeah, my budget's probably like, last year's first. So we got. They. They closed. And they had me. The council, the university's contract sources, they put on the contract sources, they got us a grant. We didn't. And then they would transfer it over to a grant. But look at. Looks like. Two million dollars. And of course, now. You know, it's probably one of the. Stuff there.
Yeah. Which, we're helping get that.
Open the box. Try not to read. Uh.
It just was like.
I like. We, at one point when I was on the. We, we got, uh, to, uh. I think we got up to forty and seven. Do you think every, that comes out that? No, we got fifty percent. We got fifty-one. And that's. And then there's. And Steve was having a laser problem. And we got down to thirty. Thirty.
She was.
She was.
And then.
Exactly.
Well, they're, they're.
Where we. They're on the stretch. But when they do, we do touch down. Yeah. I can't. I can't. Everybody controls. Listen. It's. Always.
There's. Can't come still. Million.
Just.
It doesn't do it. It's. Buying some good content. I totally didn't. Minimalist. You may get some. So. I know. They might send. Definitely. It's not. But. I have they would get. I have those. I said, that's what. While. Yeah. It's helped us, I know, so like, somebody's just gonna. Perseid everybody. Then I was talking to the. He was like, this is. Something. Well. Well, you should be there that. And I said, well, you know, I agree with you. Who's your manager? And I said, well, the ju, the judge. And the judge, it's a.
Frankie Kingsley.
For your opportunity.
So you don't.
It has been. Yeah. 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 I thought they would be, he's not, he's not fair. It was, it was on that. He's like. He's like. But I was the. I was starting to think, I said, yeah, we gotta make money instead of that. Yeah.
Oh, is that one of them?
But. He said.
Yeah, yeah.
I was like. It's, it's lost up. It's. That's like we were. Yeah. Think that, uh. There's, there's a lot of people who do their job. When especially. They've done it for years. They've done it for years. Benefits. Um, the same was. It was nice. And. So. They were. Six hours a week. Fifty-two weeks a year. And divide that by.
And.
Just. And everybody else misses. They, they. That's just something. Cause it's. Never deactivated. And they came up. Kind of way.
Cause he, they have the. I think it's, they, they. And they both should have been gone at the same. And. I'll tell them one day you might like them. Yeah, if he wants, my opinion, I'll tell him. I think they were both in together, they were both. Working towards ten, leading to the senior attorney and paid. Salary, that was their goal. That was their advantage, that's what they wanted. And that's why I was there when he interviewed all those people from the attorneys. And all the. That's his goal. It's like something. Pay rings. Minutes. They worked together the whole time.
So. Recent, I think I've answered. How do you, you don't. Yeah. I watched.
Yeah, I can. No, I'm sorry, I can't. Probably my. Yeah, it's a enemy fault.
It's alright, I'm, 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 I'll accept blame. I'm only, I'm not, I'm not.
Absolutely, hit me like.
I mean, this one.
Good day, you good day.
Seven. Seven dollar pizza? That's what you're. Five bucks? So we just. I said, well, let's, let's start the move. A little. Now, now we. That way you know now from now on. We do. Yeah. Airbrush was all, all of the. He want one some more.
And you know, they don't start questioning my checks and all this. I'm not about to. I'm all good. Some of the checks, I've been pushing like a hundred. Fifty.
I think you broke it.
Checks. And it turned into a break.
I'm ready.
Yeah, there's some stock money. I mean, I give a hundred.
Every single day.
By the end of this, Mr. Sales. Yeah. Two of them. I'm gonna strangle you today.
I'd give, I'd give you the.
Yeah. Well, that gave you gum, Mr. Juice.
Oh, it's you. Yeah, that's right.
And.
Obviously don't fit. No. I have no. Another one.
Yes.
He example.
Yeah, I like you talking about. Special session.
Oh, yeah. So, I don't believe.
Should be nobody else talking.
He's here.
Shouldn't be anybody else here talking. Mic check.
He was born for the microphone.
I was, wasn't I?
Yeah, man. I like that late night DJ voice. Yeah.
Girls say who is Mike? Yeah. Where's Mike at?
I wonder if he has.
Who you calling? Who's Mike?
Cause I, I don't mean, I don't want somebody like.
Uh. I would have thought that the interim manager would have been in secretary session with them. He was. So I'm like, is this me?
Yes.
Oh, I have no.
Yeah, he said he's. Leaving here.
I'll be. Okay.
Cause I brought my personal.
I thought.
But I'm really wary of.
Okay.
Me carrying up my personal equipment.
Okay. Yeah. I thought.
I know, I'll do what's in sometimes that I need to send your bill.
I'm like, I'm trying to go out, wow, okay. I'm really good at it.
Wrong when you sit.
I saw. I have. I have.
But it's.
Yeah, yeah. I came in late, I said, you're.
That's what I'm saying about Max. It was, uh. Doing.
He's, he's. Yeah.
What?
You want me, what we got?
Hey, this is shit. I'm just here. No, they said. Wait, I'm gonna hear. Yeah. I'm. You're gonna stay late? Yeah, I have to go there later. Uh.
Make sure that's a key back.
Well, okay. I'll go like everybody else has. Yeah. You can go with him. That I can tell you.
God.
Yeah.
That's the longest I've seen. Yeah, I know. I gotta go check my son.
It's us. Anthony, take care of it.
That's it. I'm always around if somebody needs me.
Sit, sit right here. I got your number. Come on here and I'll. He'll have some other little beer there.
Nah, I'm not to that level yet.
Cool thing.
That's the end goal, but.
Hey, who made the sign?
Huh?
I told him, I said, next time I'm sitting up there, I'm gonna hit. My name ain't fake.
Oh, I, I don't know.
You guys will need help on spring come up?
I don't know yet.
Yeah, I think that everybody lives on Bourbon Street. They're married. I don't think you split up one, two, 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 hat.
It's, it's mainly starts with the. Thirty-three in the March.
A child, a child, boy, he be doing the. Oh, it was. A problem. I said, he did.
I hope they haven't just left out. And that the. That's testing people's stuff some.
We all drunk today, so. Which one? One twenty-three, one twenty-four. Have one, I'll be driving. What was that?
That, that one that can.
Love it. You gotta put this one.[1540.62]